I'd like to call the committee of the whole meeting for April 12th, 2022 to order at 9:31. I would like to take this opportunity to respectfully acknowledge that the municipality of Jasper and Jasper National Park are on three, six, and eight territories, as well as Nati Region 4. This land is a traditional territory, meeting ground, gathering place, traveling route, and home for the Dnesa, Makewak, Anashnabe, Sequavik, Stoney Dakota, and Nati. Council, you have the agenda in front of you. Are there any additions to the agenda? I see no hands. Do I have a councillor willing to make a motion to approve the agenda? Councillor Melnick, all in favor? Agenda is approved. Council, you also have a new, the minutes from March 22nd, committee of the whole meeting. Are there any additions, or sorry, deletions, corrections to that agenda, or those minutes? Councillor Melnick?
Thank you Deputy Mayor Hall. I believe on page five, item 137 slash 22, the mayor had excused himself from the meeting. We show six councillors voted in favor, but I think there was only five of us.
Thank you Councillor Melnick. Make those corrections. Any other corrections from the minutes from March 22nd? Do you need to motion that they're approved? Okay. But a councillor will take a motion to approve the minutes with the change from Councillor Melnick. Councillor Moda, all in favor? That's Carrie. Are there any business arising from minutes? I see no hands. Oh, Mayor Ireland.
Thank you. I'll start Hall. I'm not used to such rapid movement. I did have a question arising from the minutes with respect to the motion number 13222, and that is the direction, oh I'm sorry, that's not the motion. The motion was to defer, and we're behind now because we had a special meeting. But the question of sidewalk seating, I just want if the administration could to give us an update on where that stands. I know there is certainly interest in the business sector to understand what they can anticipate in terms of commercial use of public space for the coming seasons, or I presume that from the direction, and it's not specific to these minutes, but the question of the municipal application of Parks Canada for discretionary use permit for a public space. You could just update us on that, I'd appreciate it.
Thank you Mayor Ireland. Mr. Wilson?
Thanks, I'm being very, Mayor Hall. So the latest information that I have was that Director Madon, immediately following the special council meeting, prepared the municipality's submission for discretionary use and made that submission Friday of last week. So it is in Parks Canada. I don't know whether we've had a response back from Parks Canada at this stage, but I know that from our end, the municipality said it within three days of the council direction being granted. We will follow up with Parks Canada. I have a relatable meeting with the the director of the Sports and Health Services. I'll check on the status and development from the odds.
Thank you, Mr. Wilson. Satisfied with that response. It's not in our court right now, but it is April 12th, and I believe that our recommendation was that the initiative for this season could unfold as early as May 1st. So of course, those who are planning to take advantage need a little bit of lead time to get organized. I think there's only a couple of weeks left. Thank you for that.
Thank you Mayor Ireland. Any other business arising from minutes? Okay, we'll move on to item number six, presentations. I'd like to welcome to our chamber Danny Prichet. He is going to talk to us about Snape's Hill reforestation project.
Good morning, members of council.
Mayor Ireland. May I just keep it, press it, and then I can just let me get, yeah.
Oh, there you go.
Yes.
Apologies.
Practically a councillor now.
I guess I'm not supposed to front, are I? Anyway, good morning, members of council. Mayor Ireland, I'd like to begin just by congratulating the new members of council, and thank you for your service. And of course, the incumbents who continue to serve, it's it's very much appreciated. And of course, Mayor Ireland, your contribution to this community is beyond measure. Thank you so much. Snape's Hill. Now, I'm talking this morning about a proposal to do a revisitation, if you will, of Snape's Hill and its history. And before I begin, I'd like to thank Bob Toby for his wonderful piece in his local paper. It helped to get the word out there and give people really a thumbnail idea of the history of Snape's Hill and the possibility of doing something more formal going forward. So today, I was telling Mayor Ireland this morning, I edited my presentation by 75%. So you're, will be bored too long with me here. Now, the beauty of the local course is it gets people out and know what is actually happening in any of our projects. And of course, my job here will be simply to put some flesh on the bones. Now, Parks Canada, over the last number of years, has been actively doing a restoration project of areas, green spaces that have been deforested largely due to the pine beetle kill. And among those locations, of course, was Snape's Hill. Now, last fall, under the direction of Marcy Malcolm and their restoration crew, which consists largely of graduation students, fourth year students from the University of Victoria, and they introduced roughly 80 small Douglas firs that were remnants from the from the pipeline project. Of those, of those 80 trees, we're talking probably 10 inches high, 57 of them survived. As you may remember, last year we had that extreme heat dome. And of course, these trees were small and sadly, they weren't really cared for properly. Now, having said that, 57 out of 80 is a pretty high success rate, given the circumstances. Now, I have approached Parks Canada and moreover, I've approached the restoration crew to do a robust planting on Snape's Hill. In other words, we're not talking about 10 inch tall trees. We're talking about trees that will be planted more like a grove than a nursery. So the trees will be of three or four different sizes, heights, all the way up to possibly 36 inches tall. And it will be planted on all of the slopes on Snape's Hill. This planting will be taking place on May 12th, 2022. Now, to facilitate that, I have organized an auxiliary volunteer crew to assist with Parks Canada's students and introduce the larger trees that day. Now, it's very important to know that this heat dome could happen again, and the size of these trees are going to require a very consistent watering protocol. So Parks Canada's crew, Marcy Malcolm's crew and of students are going to add this site to their watering protocol to keep the trees nourished. Now, even with that in place, it is really necessary to have more watering done for these trees. So in order to facilitate that, I have put together what I call the colored tail system. Now, if, I think you may have a picture of the water tank that was donated to me. So what the water tail system is, is I've taken Snape's Hill. I haven't actually visited it yet because we're not going to do it until the day of the planting. We don't want, this is a historical site. And I must mention that before any of this went forward, I had meetings with Mike Eater, with the historical bank of Parks Canada. I've had all, I've actually had all of my meetings, meetings on Snape's Hill. This is a nice room, but Snape's Hill is quite a bit nicer. Anyway, he is captain on the site, and he is delighted with the project. As long as we respect the site and the historical features that are there. I'm sure many of you, when all of you get up there, it's, it's, there are still very noticeable remnants of the buildings. And so before we begin, I will be taking all of these sites off with red tape. And this will serve two purposes. One, it will, it will, it will show the organic trail systems that people have been using since Mayor Ireland was a boy. And they're very organic and they're very well-traveled. And that's where we'd like people to go. We don't want any kind of interruptions or any more consecration of these sites. So when we go and redo the plants on Snape's Hill, those will be defined. Now, I'm taking, and I'll be taking Snape's Hill and dividing it into 10 plots, each roughly 30 meters square. Some on the north side will be a little deeper, roughly 30 meters square. And the system will be so simple that it'll be fun, actually. So what I'll do is each plot will have a color, red, yellow, green, et cetera. And no two plots of the same color will be side by side. One plot will be on one side of the hill, and the second, say yellow, for example, will be on the other side, which will encourage children largely to find the second spot and go over and water those trees. Now, each, each tail will have a color stripe on it, and I will have tails of every size that a two-year-old, right up to a 102-year-old will be able to carry. And the water will be supplied from the water tank that Trans Mountain has donated to me. The location of this tank is still to be determined, and I'm hoping that the community will be able to help me facilitate that so we get the most efficient ways of getting the water to the little watering crews. Now, at the water tank itself, I'm going to have a journal that, for example, if Councillor Hall had time to go water the yellow trees, she would leave in the journal, Wendy Hall, yellow, so that the next waters that come behind them will water the other ones again and leave out the ones that haven't been watered. Now, this seems simplistic, and it seems sort of game-like, but I cannot, I cannot express enough how important it is for the first year, possibly two years, that these trees be maintained properly. We are looking for a very high success rate here. I would like to expect 85 to 90% success rate. This is a lot of work, and it is a marvelous project that deserves to be cared for. Now, Trans Mountain and their generosity will deliver this day to the site for me. And of course, this is something that I really require some help with the municipality as to where it can go, and if there's any issues to its location and its safety or liabilities, what have you. I don't foresee any, but you never know in today's world. But this is, of course, is the first case of this project. As we all know, we've seen the history of Snape's Hill, with the rail history, the Grand Pacific Railways history. Our community has deeply rooted in rail history. I worked on the railway myself for 42 years. Mayor Ireland's father was an engineer on the railroad. It's been very good for our community. And really, this is part of their, their history. We got to talk specific, Canadian, whether it became Canadian National, which of course, we have a large terminal here. And it would be my hope that we can talk with the CN and have them join us in a venture if we decide that it isn't be desirable to put any kind of benching or any kind of plating with pictures. We've got some wonderful archives here in the museum with with the railway history. And I, and I have to give kudos out to Karen Byers. And it's been a decade now. I think 2010, that Karen put together a wonderful piece on the history of Snape's Hill and primarily the railroad and moreover, the Parks Canada. And an interesting side note is that once Parks Canada left, it was actually used, the buildings were actually used for housing because Jasper had a drastic shortage of housing. It's a, it's a, it's an endemic thing that we've had here for a long time. Now, I said it was one phase, and this is indeed one phase. And I've had some great conversations with some terrific members of our community regarding the phases of it. And I think you all know Mike Dillon, and Mike has been, he's had several meetings on the hill with me. And of course, we're looking at manageable. So the first year, the first phase is going to be the trees. Now, as, as old as the buildings and the history of the railways is there, it's really contemporary history compared to the trees. I mean, these trees were there 150 years before the railway even considered, before there even was a railroad. So they are the, they are driving the bus. And we're talking about a robust plant here. We're talking 100 Douglas fir trees of varying size of 36 inches. So it is going to be astounding, really. It's going to be lovely. So my vision, and it is just my vision at this juncture, is to create a contemplative space. It's not a face-to, it's not a dog park. It's not, it's not a playground as such, although you can bring your dog and you can certainly play. But the idea is to respect the history and to celebrate these wonderful iconic trees that we all have got the pleasure of seeing every time we hike. I think we're all hikers and walkers. And I surely hope you like those trees because they'll hug you back. Anyway, in terms of the, of the timeframe, I've had people go up to me and tell me that this project is seemingly coming along too quickly. And I said, well, not really. I think that if you look at it historically, this project is actually 105 years late behind schedule, which would make the, anybody who took a stick from this building seem relatively minor. But anyway, I, I would, my focus this year is I am making, I've asked a number of people to come and help us with the physical end of moving the trees. So the plan is on May 22nd, or pardon me, May 12th, we'll have two crews. I'm thinking probably as many as 20. To be honest with you, the, I think the concern we have is not enough people, but we may have too many. This is a historical site, and we have to respect it. So having said that, nobody's going to be turned away, but the people that are actually going to have a shovel in their hand will have their name on this with Parks Canada, so that we understand who's there. But this project is not a secret, and it is not to be dabbled around. This is a robust project. And I would hope that this body and our community as a whole will embrace it, take ownership of it, and enjoy it. I don't know, I don't foresee offending anyone by this. And it's a marvelous space. It's probably two acres. I've asked to get the actual dimensions. I'm not sure. I'm just guessing. But it's large. And given that we have our neighbors who are building more infrastructure for their condominium complex there, and really a deterioration of what is left of the historical remnants there in quite a sad state. So this is the time, this is the crossroads. And I think, given everything else that's going on in this world of ours, it's a happy project. It's a lovely project. I did use the term, it's a, it's a project for the soul. And it really is, because it's not about, there's no commerce here. There's no, there's no special interests here. This is for a project, it's a project for mankind. Bring your kids, bring your dog, sit and reflect. And going forward, I think that would automatically get us into what would be the best infrastructure, benching styles, interpretive pictures, signage, something that is in keeping with the timeframe, 1910, 1912. I have my own thoughts on that. But I would, of course, encourage and would need to have support of the council and in terms of infrastructure study and a good, varied group of thinkers, visionary thinkers, that can come up with something with that in mind. And along those lines, there are a couple of practical infrastructure concerns that I think that the council could help me with, and that would be the insertion of a water tank and a really efficient way to get the water to our little watering. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Prichet. I want to thank you so much. This is an amazing project. And for the last couple of years of time you've put into this. Any comments from council? Councillor Wilson?
Thank you, Mr. Prichet. Well, it doesn't always go, the best time to plant a tree is 20 years ago, but the second best time is May 12th, 2022, exactly, right? But yeah, I, of course, once a project gets moving and starts to have momentum, I guess maybe some people might think so much quickly, but I really congratulate you on the work that you have done running up until now. And I'd like to put my support behind assisting you and your group in any way feasible possible. And so I guess my question too is with regards to the watering tank, that watering tank has to be filled periodically with location near hydrant or our watering truck be of assistance? Like, how often do you think the water, the water tank will have to be filled?
Thank you, Councillor Wilson. I, that's a great question. Originally, my thoughts were to put the water tank just off of the curb stop on Lodge Pool because it is an easy ascent to the top of the hill. And I bumped into one of my crew, Scott Sherl, who's a beauty. And he has some fire fighting experience. And he said, Danny, why don't you put it on the top of the hill? And let the water run down, which of course is brilliant. So I don't know if there's any logistical or historical reason why that can't happen, but that does make sense. And I talked to, a person approached me around Stanco, who's a longtime resident, approached me and suggested that the water truck, the fire truck could fill that thing anytime. And as far as infrastructure, Lodge Pool does have a fire extinguisher on the southwest end of it that is temporary under service, but I believe that might be because of freezing, and they only use it in summer. I don't know if that's a fact, but obviously, there is that there. So as far as the, the, how often will we have to fill it? I hope it's often. The Parks Canada restoration crew does have a water truck, but they will fill it also. And I believe that almost for certain, that I'm sure the fire department would be happy to fill it. And I would ask the municipality if they could help fill it. The, the theory here is, let's make the burden light. That's, that's, we're only talking about water. So I think that if we, if we can, the key here is to make sure that these trees are watered. So if we can get a simplistic system, and I don't know that it gets any simpler than water tails, but if there's anything more comprehensive that we can add to this, the watering protocol, then by all means, I think we should, we should, we should flush that all out so that there's not going to be, if we get a 40-degree spell of 10 days, you're going to have, you're going to have dieback, and we don't want that. I mean, at the end of the day, we want to have a very high success rate. And I firmly believe we will. And not just of the trees, but Snape's Hill is not, is not barren of other flora up there. There's a robust, there's the popper trees, we have pine trees, we have remnants of the old Douglas fir trees. There's roses, there's any number of wildflowers. Snape's Hill is going to become an extremely burdened space. It's not, just, just from the collateral nutrients that the, all the other plants are going to get from this tree grow. It's going to transform it, it really will. And it has to be, it has to be nurtured the first year. It's critical. First year, maybe two, because that's when these trees are going to really take root in a very physical way, but they're going to get to be with each other again. Douglas firs are very communal. They, if you walk in the forest, and you pay attention. Every time you see another tree, you will see any number of trees around them. They grow in clusters. They grow, they love to be together. So this is going to be a wonderful study of these plants. The students with the University of Victoria will be planting these trees directionally. So we'll be taking them, if they're facing west in the forest, when we replant them, on Snape's Hill, they're still going to be facing west. So there, it seems, it seems sort of pokey-pokey, but it isn't. It's a proven science. They grow in certain directions, and they're happiest that way. We're going to make them happy. So our job is to make them happy for the first couple of years, and their job is to make us happy for the rest of our lives. So that's the plan here. And to be honest with you, there, I don't think any half-measure is acceptable. It has to be robust, and it has to be all in. And these trees are going to be a wonderful feature for all of our little kids, all the way up to the university students. These kids are brilliant. I'm so looking forward to working with them. They're fourth year students, they're in forestry, they're, they're in horticulture. They're, they're bright kids. I'm so delighted for them to be able to share with us their knowledge and be able to come back. Can you imagine that 50 years ago, these students come back and these trees are now 50 feet tall? It's a pretty neat legacy for them. And all of our little kids, instead of digging scoops or roots or whatever, you can dig into their tail and then throw rocks at each other.
Thank you, Councillor Moda.
Well, I just, I want to thank you for your dedication and just the genius behind this project. So I look at it and you use terms like pokey-pokeys and simplistic. It seems, you know, quite complicated for me anyway. I like how everything is rolled out and you know, this promotes community health on so many levels. And that's something I subscribe to. So again, congratulations. Thank you for bringing this forward to us.
Thank you, Councillor Wilson.
Thank you, Councillor Moda. Mayor Ireland?
Thank you Deputy Mayor Hall. And thank you, Mr. Prichet. I will say to begin that reducing your presentation by 75% was 100% effective. You made some, some really interesting student connections. Water is critical. We had an experience through CN Eco Connections with planting Douglas fir along the town trail at East End Town. And it was marvelously successful. I think 100% of those trees were maintained. That was probably a consequence primarily of the fact that they were watered by a drip system underground. And the water, of course, was critical because even at at that time, although the heat dome is not as significant as it was last year, we had some hot weather, and all of those trees, I think there were 125, survived. They were much larger trees too. The small ones that we mentioned that, that's Snape's Hill. However, just thinking about the importance of water and same time, the importance of overwatering in some circumstances. I wonder if any thought has been given, and again, this might be something that we reference CN, we might potentially come up with some, some money, if there's money involved. But I wonder whether a gravity field But I wonder whether a gravity feed system, overground, a drip system overground from your tank at the top of the hill might be an effective solution. Because I, I respect that having community members come out and take pails as a community engagement benefit that can't be matched elsewhere. But in terms of the health of the trees, systematic watering system, a drip system running out of gravity from the tank that you've organized. But overground, because we're not going to dig up a historical site, but is that a possibility? Has it been contemplated or is it too late in the game to think about such a measure?
Thank you. I, there's the logistics of how we're going to get the water to the trees is something, I mean, I, I, he said, use the word holistic, but there is a holistic element to this. The tree, these trees are going to be planted without the benefit of any additional soils. Parks Canada's Restoration Crew Program are decidedly nervous about introducing any kind of auxiliary soils to the, to the trees. And because Douglas firs, first of all, grow in rocky soil and they, they feel it's not necessary. So any worry about overwatering, I think, will, will not happen because it's, it's very rocky there. In terms of running any infrastructure overground, that, there hasn't been any discussion of that other than the possibility of the tank at the top and having fire hoses running down to say four locations on the hill or three locations where the, the, the pails could be, be filled. I don't know how the historical weighing of Parks Canada in the field of that kind of infrastructure. It's, I guess it's a discussion that should be had. It would, it will be had. I think we don't want to make the watering end of it to become so complicated that it's going to, it's going to take more longer to set up the infrastructure than actually water the trees. I, you know, I think realistically, ten people in the course of a week would augment any kind of extra needs that the, the trees would need. Now, the, the Restoration Crew will be monitoring these, this journal and the watering journal and the, the condition of the trees throughout the summer until the fall. So at this juncture, I don't, I don't perceive there being an issue. Clearly, it's, it, this is a project in, in flux. It's, it's something that we're going to see. And at the end of the day, this is a study of trees. We're going to see more of it. And it's a perfect spot for the different elements of the, of the geography is very interesting up there.
Thank you for that. If, if I may, then I would like to propose a motion. And that is that committee recommend that counsel accept the presentation of Mr. Frichette with thanks. And that counsel direct administration to offer appropriate municipal support to the Snake's Hill Reforestation Project proposal. I've left that intentionally vague, which is against my nature. But I'm not sure exactly what the end result might be and what would be best practice as we move forward. So I will do the appropriateness of municipal support to a combination of input from administration and project designers. And I'm sure that they will find the best path forward, whether it's fire trucks filling tanks or otherwise. But the general nature of the motion is intended to be very grateful for the presentation, Mr. Frichette. And as supportive as we can be within the context of this being historical, cultural site as well. Thank you very much for the, for the presentation, but that is our motion.
Counsel Wilson.
Yeah, I really appreciate that motion and like the, the ability to be flexible in that motion. Although maybe just a note to administration, maybe we can get one point person to work with Mr. Frichette rather than who, you know, just, you know, the ops department. So, so if Mr. Frichette could work directly with Mr. Greyhead or have him as that contact person. Direct too much, but just so he has one person to get that, so then it could be you, but you might just delegate that. Yeah.
Thank you, Counsel Wilson. I don't have any other comments or data on that motion. Let's see, hands up. I want to thank you as well. I love this project on my street, the trains and trees. I even see out of school care or summer fun, maybe adopt a plot or walking down there every few days. It's a really, really great thing. I really like it. There is a motion on the table. I will call the question, all in favor with the amendments, those amendments are just, okay, all in favor of the motion? And that is carried.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Counsel Wilson?
I just wanted to speak a little bit more to future years and not, you know, we, I guess we don't have to put a motion forward today, but I think in my mind, municipality would be open to working with your group. And well, you know, in, in future, maybe we could start a working group for Snake's Hill restoration. And towards fundraising, et cetera, for benches, parks, all of what you will do earlier, but I think at this juncture, support in the short term. And then again, I think there is overwhelming support for longer.
If I could just say, thank you so much for your time and May twenty, May twelfth on your calendars and it'd be marvelous. You're all welcome to come down and, and run a shovel if you like. Or just come by and have a look. I'm going to supply enough caffeine and simple sugars to drive a teenager out of their mind. So I'd be loved to see a lot each and every one of you. And it's, it's a community, it's a community project that belongs to all of you. And there's a lot more going on that, that could really make it a special, special project for years and years to come. Thank you so much for your time this morning.
Thank you. Very much. Okay, moving on to agenda item seven, new business. Seven point one, Mountain Makers Arts and Culture. I see Mr. Reed has joined us via Zoom. And I hand you it over to you, Mr. Reed, with a fresh haircut, it looks like.
I thank you, Deputy Mayor Hall and through the council. That is correct. I'm here with the Mountain Makers Art and Culture update from your director. The recommendation is that committee receives this community development director update report on the Mountain Makers presentation and the relationship between municipality and local nonprofit organizations for information. And of course, the option that council could offer other information or amendments as you see fit. The background, on July twenty seventh, twenty twenty one, council received a public presentation from Selena Frisson and Sabrina Doyle of Mountain Makers regarding the challenges and opportunities in the arts and culture sector in Jasper. The presentation included a clear request, Mountain Makers works with the municipality to find equally accessible inclusive space that legally complies with the need to reside rules. Additionally, Ms. Frisson, Ms. Doyle presented the following value statements, that there would be balance, more balanced resources spread between recreation and culture, more collaboration, finding a space that would allow more participation, transparency, a material strategy and corresponding budget for arts and culture, and attention and increase in acknowledgement from council. After the presentation, council passed the following motion, number three twenty five of twenty one, that council McGrath, that committee direct administration to come back to a future committee, the whole meeting with a report to follow up on the request made in the presentation. Subsequently, and in addition, on September fourteenth, twenty twenty two, administration provided a report summarizing the relationship between Jasper Community Teen Society or JCTS and the municipality of Jasper. While that item was initially focused on the Jasper Community Team and Friends of Jasper Culture and Recreation, subsequent discussions resulted in council passing the following motion, number three eighty six of twenty one, Council McGrath again directed or, or motioned that committee direct administration to bring forward recommendations on how to enhance the relationship between the municipality and local nonprofit organizations, including the Jasper Community Teen Society and Friends of Jasper Culture and Recreation. As the relationship with our nonprofit service providers such as Habitats for the Arts or It Only Takes a Dream directly relates to both of these motions, administration has been engaging in conversations and establishing relationships over the past few weeks to collaboratively develop a path forward to address both motions in concert. And by way of discussion, this update report is, is intended purely to give council and residents the current status of these two motions and the work involved and invite council comments for focusing administrative efforts and to show the projected timelines for resolution, whatever that may look like. And so the following plan slash timeline is presented for council. In April, many initial meetings to this, to understand the context. In May, we've projected to have certainly some quick wins. So we definitely already have an open and collaborative dialogue created with several local nonprofit champions. We're working on Share Your Passion program development. Just a bit of background on Share Your Passion, what we're working towards is the idea that should a resident or group of residents ha, see a gap in the community in service development or service or, or program development, that they would be able to find an easy pathway to connecting their passion and what they might like to bring to what the municipality can offer by way of infrastructure or support. We are also looking at the facility booking fee structure and, and looking at streamlining that and, and creating some process clarity in concert, I suppose, with Share Your Passion, but also just straight up things like, an easy example is there is no sort of drop in rate existing right now for the multipurpose hall. So there's a, a way that it, it, we can easily streamline that, that space access to make it more used throughout the, the days and, and weeks and years. And we are working on an existing community spaces inventory, inventory rather, so that we will be able to describe clearly what options we have for people, certainly when they try to share their passions. We've had several initial meetings as listed in April, but some of the meetings that have yet to happen are Jasper Artist Guilds, Friends of, Friends of Culture and Recreation and others to come. The follow up meetings to further develop the plan and partnership. And then in June, we look to have a relationship agreement drafts. And these relationship agreements are, you know, we're very, very common over here in community development. We have what are called funding agreements or partnership agreements or relationship agreements with certainly funders, with partners. And what we want to drive from this process is clarity and transparency so that we would all know exactly who's doing what in the zoo, so to speak, with each of these partners. And there may be policy change drafts that, as needed, if, if we come across areas where policy is needing to be modernized to support this kind of work. And then advocacy and operational positions developed in regards to that need to reside item that was mentioned by Selena and Sabrina, that how do we facilitate artists in our community? And what that looks like yet is still vague. And then, you know, towards the end of summer, we'll get those agreements signed, which would enable the release of financial contributions as appropriate according to the terms as described in those agreements and any final policy changes. There is, of course, some strategic relevance, governance and social equity, develop and nurture mutually beneficial relationships and partnerships. Governance and social equity, improve communications, information sharing with the community. Organizational health, review and evaluate committee and board role, structure and responsibility. I, I didn't mention, and I'll just throw it in quickly, that of course, one of the big drivers of all of this work is to connect our community with our facilities certainly and increase the usage of same. So that strategic relevance is, is not listed per se, but that is definitely one of our main goals. And we are projecting that there are no extra costs outside of existing budget to respond as, as described above. And I'm open to questions from council.
Thank you very much, Mr. Reed. I, Counsel Demoto.
Yeah, I really appreciate the follow up on presentation and the steps that are going forward. I don't have any questions, but if this was already referenced, I apologize for the repetition here, but in the background, there's a reference made to September fourteenth of twenty twenty two, and I believe that should be twenty twenty one. I know there's a lot of twenty twenty two.
Thank you for that. Deputy Mayor Hall through to Counsel Demoto, you are correct. That's a typo that I will take responsibility for and correct for the minutes.
Thank you, Counsel Wilson.
Just a bit concerned about the point advocacy and operational positions developed in regard to the need to reside in relation to artists in their communities. What, what does this really entail? It is a pretty big topic to unpack and say we tread around that one pretty lightly at this point.
Certainly Deputy Mayor Hall through to Counsel Wilson. Absolutely, you are one hundred percent correct that, that it's very nebulous even to me right now. But it, it was part of the presentation and there are certainly some opportunities that, that perhaps we can all brainstorm even today. But that's why that item has some time ahead of it, so that we can get on the right side of it and make sure that any, you know, maybe the position statement is simple and straightforward and, and we get it out really quickly. But maybe it is nuanced and maybe there's some flexibility with some creative programming that can allow us to assist artists in meeting that. We don't know what that looks like yet, but you're, you're absolutely right that it will take some concerted effort and care and attention.
Thank you, Mr. Reed. Mr. Yen, can you follow this up?
Thanks very much, Deputy Mayor Hall. Just to supplement with Director Reed who's saying, certainly advocacy is the domain of council. And one of the things that came across from the presentation that they supposedly said is there is a a concern that it was a challenge to be a working artist in the municipality. And you'll appreciate that having opportunity for the need to reside to be satisfied by just being working artist, we might see a flood of quote unquote, working artists moving to Jasper. That said, there may be the potential for Parks Canada to create a, a limited number of opportunities for working artists to qualify as a need to reside. And so I think that that was the initial concept that they raised. But certainly advocacy is council's domain. If council wanted us to get more information about that or create a proposal about what that could look like, so council could choose to advocate on that issue or not. That's something that Director Reed, I can support council with. But it is, as you say, this isn't broadly the need to reside, it's a very sort of narrow consideration of this one particular issue. And I think the view presenters was that, you know, if you are a working artist, in order to live in Jasper, you have some other job. It says, I'm allowed to live in Jasper, right? And I think it's an open question for council whether there might be a different approach that would allow someone to focus on their practice with their full time. But that would have to be balanced off of creating sort of an open invitation to anybody who happened to buy a set of paints and call themselves a working artist, right? And that would only obviously be a collaboration of Parks Canada. So I think that's the concept there. And if council wished administration do some background work to provide you some insight into that. So you could choose whether or not you wanted to advocate on that issue. I think that's the, the direction that administration is considering Director Reed's presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Yen. I'm going to go to Mayor Ireland next. Counsel Demoto.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Hall. Thank you, Mr. Reed, for the report. I have some brief comments and then some, some questions. Firstly, I, I really do appreciate the focus on strategic relevance. I think it is critical that we align decision making with the overall strategic plan and council and CAO and directors just spent time last week. refreshing their focus on strategic priorities. So I think it's really important that this be part of the report. I I would simply add that this is such a holistic endeavor that that it can be attached to other items of strategic relevance. Looking through our our existing document, under organizational health, you might also have mentioned a priority of council, which continues to be our priorities until we change them, to conduct a review of recreational and cultural programming services and opportunities. And certainly this fits within that. I also think it fits within economic health and fiscal equity. I know that part of the presentation last July was really focused on the equitable use of facilities, and that's embedded in this. And that equity part is is really important to our strategic priorities. So I thank you for recognizing that. I do have some questions about the report. Firstly, the meetings, I I'm unsure whether those initial meetings that are referenced are one-off meetings with each of the groups or whether they are combined meetings. It seems to me there's potential here that there are many cultural and artistic focused groups in the community that are missing from that list. So it's a consideration as to how open that lot to be. I also wonder whether when we get down to June, the relationship agreement drafts that are presented, whether that in fact presupposes some of the outcomes of the efforts in April and May. So we start with a very much longer list of initial groups with whom to have meetings and then come down to quite a smaller number of groups in respect to those that you would anticipate drafting relationship agreements. So I just wonder whether there's too much presupposing and whether it could be more open-ended. And that leads to, this really my only question of all of this, is has the department considered filtering all of this through the lens of community conversations? I appreciate the work that's being done, but at about the time of the motions that are referenced, that is July twenty-seventh, when we initially heard from Mountain Makers, council made a motion in September of twenty twenty-one, there was another motion. Sometime in that same timeframe, there was a motion for council to proceed with community conversations. And one of them is an arts and culture community conversation. And it seems to me that there might be an avenue here to really work to enhance those community conversations by filtering this process through that lens rather than having one-offs directly between representative groups and municipal administration. So I I just put that out there as to whether or not we have considered the role that community conversations might play, particularly in this instance. But overall, I feel that we have an obligation to enhance the use and the effectiveness of those community conversations. And this, I think, would be a real opportunity to do that.
Thank you, Mayor Ireland. Mr. Reed.
Yes, thank you, Deputy Mayor Hall through to Mayor Ireland. Okay, so going backwards, I will jump all over your reference to community conversations. Very, of course, very appropriate comment. And I will say that much of the work is supported by community conversations. Certainly, the original Mountain Makers presentation actually began at community conversations, just the concept and discussions. And so community conversations as a perhaps adjunct to this process or support to this process is ongoing. And going backwards, one more question, the idea of one-offs. This is definitely part of the orientation of your new director to get the lay of the land and and who's who in the zoo. So using community conversations as one method, also certainly diving deeper on individual meetings, I guess a one-two punch there. And the presupposition point is well heard. And the point about, you know, why are these groups specifically listed? This I should have made more clear is a recommended or a sort of a sampling. This is where the initial work of your new director arriving has been focused because, you know, this is clearly a priority of of both council, administration and and the community. Again, based on what we're hearing at community conversations. So I I I appreciate every one of those points and questions. And if you could read my mind, you would see that they were all included and that perhaps some more detail on the generality and and a representative sampling rather than a closed list. And so I really appreciate you bringing that forward. Did I answer those three, though? That's a that's a tough road to get three questions in one. Did I do all right?
You did very well, thank you. I I just you did very well, thank you. I I am still left though wondering as this unfolds in whatever format, whether whether strict or or more broad and focused, whether there is an intent to continue to use the community conversation model, because I think not just in arts and culture, but overall, council is committed to a different approach using community input through that context. And I would like us, well, I would like to know that that we as an organization are going to make full use of that opportunity to engage the community through community conversations rather than anybody subverting that, maybe that's not quite the right word, but that circumventing the community conversations to go straight to municipal administration. I think it it works better from a community perspective. I think it also works better from an administrative perspective that you use the filter of community conversation. So if that is the plan, I'm very happy to hear it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Ireland. Mr. Givens has some follow-up.
Sure, thanks very much, Deputy Mayor Hall. Mayor Ireland, I know Director Reed and his team are very committed to community conversations. I expect that they'll fully do that in terms of community engagement. Just want to make a bit of a distinction. A number of these organizations are ones that we have some kind of direct relationship with. And so as stewards of firsts and of public assets, we have a need to have some direct one-on-one relationships from time to time. So I think Mr. Reed in his orientation, as he referenced, is establishing those one-to-one relationships. But a number of these organizations, obviously the library, JAG, Hapathat, are all tenants of a public facility, others we have funding agreements with or we've made financial contributions to. And so those would be those relationships or that relationship management and stewardship would obviously be most appropriate or really only appropriate in a one-to-one relationship and not through the form of community conversations. I think that's generally what Director Reed is talking about. I think additionally, he and his team are very committed to ensuring the conversation about arts and culture and recreation are happening in community conversations. So there's that opportunity for cross-pollination and collaboration to emerge. And I think Mr. Reed is taking a really good focus on establishing a direct and appropriate relationship between the municipality and the organizations that we have some kind of organizational intanglement with, whether that's, as I said, leasing or financial contributions or whatever. So there's two different levels, and I think Mr. Reed has got a plan that falls on both those levels.
Thank you for that. Counselor Melick.
Thank you, Acting Deputy Mayor Hall. And thank you, Mr. Reed and Mr. Givens, for some clarifying comments, which helped to perhaps clarify something in my mind, Mr. Givens, to arts, culture and recreation, which is probably answering my question as to why the skate park group was in this grouping in the April meetings, but it sounds like other more recreation-oriented groups would be part of meetings as well. So I'm glad to see that it's not just focused with the skate park group, but other, other, whether it be the volleyball or other sport groups that use our facilities. One acronym, though, that I'm confused about, that we use always in documents. In the initial meetings in May, we referenced the JPCA. And for the life of me, I can't find any reference anywhere to JPCA and don't know what it is.
Certainly, Acting Deputy Mayor Hall through to Counselor Melick. My apologies, so Jasper Park Cycling Association. So with with that work that they are ongoing in relation to the bike park specifically. But that that's what that one stands for. My apologies for not listing.
Thank you for that clarity. And again, it just reinforces what the reference was to other groups in recreation that we are supporting. So thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Melick. Counselor Demoto.
Well, I appreciate the items that the mayor and Mr. Melick, Counselor Melick, I guess, because that charted my point by seventy-five percent. I just, I just wanted to thank you, Deputy Mayor Hall. I just, I like the fact that, you know, there's there's making some reference here to need to reside. And, you know, through my time living in Jasper here, you know, having friends that have moved here in the community and and having the understanding that they came here with, you know, some specific skills. There are a lot of university programs, high-level degrees that you can get, fine arts and music, as an example, and you come here and and if you want to survive as an artist in any way, it's very difficult. So what defines active employment in the community? I think that the the more that we address that, you know, we're a community first. I know that we serve a higher purpose in in so many areas, particularly towards it. But, you know, it's movements like this are very important to the foundation of what we're here. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Demoto. Any other comments or questions from council for Mr. Reed? I don't see any hands. There is Counselor relating to, you say, your recommendation? Mayor Ireland?
I I'm prepared, but I do have a question. The the recommendation that comes to us is that committee receive the report. Is the intent that it be received by committee or that committee recommend council receive the report? It is written clearly. I just want to make sure that that's the opinion.
Acting Deputy Mayor Counselor Hall, just get all the pieces in there for this worship. And I think, Your Worship, this is an example of the type of thing that administration made a presentation to committee about ongoing work with municipality. There's no financial requirements requested or bylaws or policy changes that are needed to let the council get council certification. So we're very comfortable with the essentially acknowledging that this work is being done. We heard you, administration, thank you very much. So that's why I can stay here rather than before we come to council.
Thank you, Mr. Givens. With that, then, I'm prepared to make the motion that committee receive the community development director update report on the Mountain Makers presentation and the relationship between the municipality and local nonprofit organizations for information.
Thank you, Mayor Ireland. Let's see, hands on that one. I will call question on favor. And that information is received. Moving on to IM seven point two, the West Hillhead Regional Waste Management Authority Governance and Administrative Plan. Pass the question to Mr. Givens.
Thanks, Acting Deputy Mayor Hall. Counselor, in front of you, you will see a recommendation that is intended to go up to council that committee recommend council approve the West Hillhead Regional Waste Management Authority and Management Agreements as presented. They are attached to the council package along with the twenty fourteen agreements that's being proposed to be superseded by the new agreement. The West Hillhead Regional Waste Management Authority is obviously a longstanding part of operations. The municipality of Jasper joined in twenty fourteen. That was the most recent addition to that entity, which also consists of Yellowhead County, the town of Edson, and essentially operates the municipal solid waste disposal system on lands that are located just west and adjacent to the town of Hinton. On August third of last year, past council provided support and principle for the concept of the authority transitioning to a commission. Since that time, the CCAOs across the region have reviewed the situation and recommended some time ago to the authority board that the transition to a commission be paused so that what was administrative perception of our pressing issue of the actual ongoing management support for the authority, that that need to be addressed before making that transition to a commission. So the board of the authority supported that recommendation from the combined CAOs. And this is the next step along that path to ensuring the stability of the management support for the authority. Historically, the town of Hinton has provided the administrative and financial management support to the authority. They indicated that it had the desire or capacity to act in that role. And for some time, the authority had engaged Bertie Kriner, the acting consultant, to provide that administrative support. Mr. Kriner had informed the board that he was going to be shutting down his practice and would be filling in, able to fill in that role, and that's really left a gap for the administration of the authority. And discussion, the CAOs identified that it was necessary to better define the rules and responsibilities that went along with the obligations of of filling that role. And that there were a number of different ways to sort of fill that gap that was left by Hinton choosing choosing not to fill that role. We identified that it obviously could be put out to market to see if there is somebody, a contractor, that we could bring on to do that. As we had with Mr. Kriner or other entities, or a one of the partners could play that role. West Hillhead County had offered to do so with the understanding that there needed to be more definition. I think it was very challenging and all fairness intended because if you look at the twenty fourteen agreement, it really aligned how the board would be established, not with the rules, responsibility, the administrative support would be. So in front of you, you see a refreshed agreement for the establishment of the of the authority, which is essentially supersedes the twenty fourteen agreement, which was when Jasper joined, and really defines what the authority is, how its meetings will happen, and you know, finances for the authority, liability, indebtedness, insurance. The dispute resolution between the partners. So that really is the partnership agreement that aligns on how the authority itself will run. There are some minor updates from the twenty fourteen agreement, but the practical matters within it are essentially the same. No significant changes, membership being proposed or anything else, although there is a specific discussion about how new members may be brought on because the independent review has endorsed becoming a member. And there's a process that will involve that. The agreement is essentially a continuation, modernization, which may force you to partnership agreement, establishing a agreement. The additional agreement in front of you is the management agreement that is intended to serve as the agreement between the partner municipalities that form the authority and the authority between a manager. And so you can see that this could be applied, whether we have an independent contractor, some organization, or one of the partner municipalities. In this case, Yellowhead County has offered to take on that role. And this agreement defines the responsibilities of the the manager, how, you know, linked to the agreement, termination, and process payment, dispute resolution, everything else. So essentially saying, we have one agreement that is modernized for the establishment of the authority. Then we have a proposal, management agreement between the authority and the manager. And so those are the two documents that are in front of you. All of the partner municipalities are actually viewing these two documents today. They're all being presented today with the intention going forward to all of the municipal councils all of the week. So we're all on the same schedule. This has been reviewed by our MRF in terms of the development of both of the documents. Uh, this has been reviewed by uh, our M R F, um, in terms of the development of both of the documents. Um, and administration recommends that committee recommend council approve uh, the document as presented. I'm hoping any questions to that.
Thank you, Mr. Given. Uh, Mayor Ireland?
Thank you, Acting Deputy Mayor Hall, and thank you, Mr. Given. Counselor Wilson and I sit on um, the West Yellowhead Regional Waste Management Authority Board. Um, so we have some familiarity with this, um, and both of us have served, I think, since twenty seventeen on this board. It has been challenging to get to this point, as Mr. Given indicated in the report. Quite recently, there was a motion from the board to transition to a commission. The C O's then got involved and provided advice that it was too early. Um, had um, this gone differently, I, I think I would have been content um, with an updated agreement as a final solution to the struggles that we've had, um, rather than the commission. So I'm, I'm inclined personally um, to go this route, that is, um, update the agreement. It is going to all councils, or pardon me, to all councils, um, and then back to the board. But, and I, I regret that a couple of matters did not um, make their presence sufficiently known in my mind earlier on and having read in preparation for today's um, presentation to council. I am inclined to uh, make the motion suggested, um, but rather than as presented with some proposed amendments to the agreement. And if I may take the time to take counsel through my concerns. Paragraph twenty-three of the agreement provides that, and this is just with respect to, to budget. But if anybody, um, any member disputes the budget, then we follow the dispute resolution process and that dispute resolution process um, is clarified in later provisions. Under section forty of the proposed agreement. The way I read that is that at the end of the dispute resolution, effectively the authority becomes a requisitioning authority. And that means that our own budget, to some extent, is out of our hands. It's like a requisition that we would get from Evergreens or from the garbage for uh, for school tests. And I'm not sure that that's really the intent, that any council advocate its budget responsibility um, to the West Yellowhead Regional Waste Management Authority Board. I mean, it, of course, it's in small and relative terms, but the way I read that is that um, a dissenting member would, at the end of the dispute resolution process, be required to accept a budget that has implications on the municipal budget that is determined by arbitration. That to me, that's not really sit well, and I'm not sure that all councils or all councils have really considered that. There are similar provisions, although not with budget, in respect to um, the same or related issue that appear under section forty-five and forty-six. And that is withdrawal. And so if we enter this under section forty-five, if we want out, we can't get out, nor can anybody else without unanimous consent of all the municipalities. So we enter an agreement and all of us now are bound. And there, there are two clauses there, forty-five and forty-six, that both require unanimity, which, when flipping its head, gives each municipality a veto. Again, I'm not sure that we've really considered what that means. And particularly in section forty-five, you need unanimity to wind up. Do you need unanimity to transition to a commission, for example, which was the goal here anyway? The, the board has worked on the basis of majority uh, votes. And I'm not sure that we are all inclined to change that so that any one member would in fact have a veto power. So those are, those are concerns that I have with respect to it. And I, I'm open to um, any discussion that council wants to have on that. Um, but I would propose that at the end, I would be inclined to make a motion in the terms of the recommendation, but rather than the words at the end as presented, to recommend in principle, but subject to taking those points for discussion at the board level so that it is clear that all the member municipalities have an opportunity to turn their minds to those particular questions. And that is um, control over your own budget and um, the unanimous slash veto power that is embedded in those sections.
Thank you, Mayor Ireland. Counselor Demota, would you?
Thank you. I appreciate that. Um, in, under the current agreement, uh, under, in appendix A, Schedule A, um, there's some um, references um, made for the duties of the manager. And member three refers to the regional waste reduction and diversion program operations. At the time, that was, it says currently suspended with no new initiatives being pursued. Um, I'm just wondering if there's an appetite from this council and uh, the collective to pursue any grant funding out there that we could use to look at um, the efficiencies of uh, diverting waste, uh, particularly in recycling. There are a lot of initiatives that are taking place, um, where we don't know the end result of all our initiatives. And I'm talking about glass, plastic, um, and, you know, all these endeavors that take place in every community. And we still don't understand fully on uh, the outcome of all of these products and where to go. And are we wasting our time doing all this? And I, I'm not sure if that falls in here, but uh, you know, if there is some desire from all the communities to pursue, you know, what better opportunities there might be for what we're doing? Um, I don't know where that would fall under the existing uh, agreement. And I was just wondering if there might be an opportunity to pursue efficiencies in regards to that.
Thank you, Counselor Demota. Uh, Mr. Given?
Sure. Thanks very much, Acting Deputy Mayor Hall. First, I think, uh, important to note that the uh, Schedule A that you're referencing is attached as a part of the appendix A is actually proposed uh, part of the new management agreement. So this is basically saying, any manager that the authority would hire to conduct the operations of the authority should be able to do these things. That's why there are, you sort of, what you would see in generally job descriptions. Just, we did some work to say, if we're going to hire an individual or a company, what would they generally be required to do, what skills would one of them have? So, um, just to be clear, that's not a part of the current uh, existing agreement, which is appendix B. Um, that aside, I think, Counselor Demota, your, your central point is really about waste production initiatives. Uh, my understanding is that the authority board um, is still committed to waste reduction initiatives. I know that Mr. Kriner had done some work to identify uh, opportunities to conduct some, some discussion and waste reduction initiatives within, and Counselor Wilson or Mayor Ireland may know more of this detail, but there was some existing dollars that the authority had. And there was some discussion about how they might use this small amount of existing dollars towards waste, waste reduction initiatives. And I think there was some great certainly happening at the board level about that. So, um, and I know that the authority had, had waste reduction as a major focus intent behind the transition to a commission. So I think that the board is still committed to that. Um, I think that there, there is a, uh, from the administrative perspective, there's a need to take a little bit of a pause of the organizational change and creation of new initiatives to ensure that the organization itself is on stable footing. And none of that prevents the municipality of Jasper from independently identifying environmental initiatives that it wishes to pursue. So, Counselor Demota, I think, uh, I think board, Mayor Ireland and Counselor Wilson to speak with us are still committed to waste reduction initiatives, um, just saying, you know, at a high level, they're taking a bit of a pause there. Um, and uh, as counsel discussed, there's two kind of special concern up between us, active and management in that area as well.
Thank you, Mr. Given. Counselor Demota, some follow-up?
Yes, and I thank you for that, uh, Deputy Mayor Hall. I apologize if I missed the uh, formalities in the beginning when you apologized me. I tend to forget. Thank you. Um, so I appreciate it. Um, yeah, and I apologize for the confusion. I just, uh, from where the signatures are at the end of the piece, like, it's, it's kind of broken up in my mind. So I, I was having a little difficulty uh, following that. So I do appreciate that. And, you know, I know that, you know, the, the strategic relevance uh, under environmental responsibility does, uh, you know, um, give us the, the opportunity to review uh, garbage sewer and recycling composting programs. Um, and I, you know, I, I think I was looking in the future for uh, an economy of scale here. And, and I think, um, if, if that's still kind of the intent, then, you know, I'd, I'd fully uh, would support that. Um, just before I finish up, on the background piece of the beginning here, um, in the third paragraph, it says, on August third, twenty twenty-one, Jasper Council, council provided support and principle. So I didn't know if that was just Jasper council or, you know, council, council. So, um, little bit of a typo there. I, I don't mean to be a stickler on that. Had to provide a little bit of lemming once.
Thank you, Counselor Demota. Counselor Wilson was in queue and I will move next. Counselor Wilson?
Uh, yeah, it was just to um, go back to what Mayor Ireland had identified and uh, I, I support his uh, his changes to, to um, this agreement, although it would be beneficial to um, split these up and a- approve the management agreement uh, to move forward with that. Uh, in the meantime, as I think there is a bit of a timeline with uh, Mr. Kriner uh, on the verge of retirement and actually past his retirement, he is originally retired. Um, so I, I think um, maybe there is benefit to approve the management uh, position agreement and then um, applying to me the uh, the authority agreement.
Thank you, Counselor Wilson. Mayor Ireland, would you just sit down a bit?
Well, in fact, I do, um, and I, I appreciate um, that suggestion and support. I, I think that is, it is critical that um, there be a manager in place. Even as we might um, discuss the overall relationship um, changes in the municipality. But I, I accept that, that suggestion um, from Counselor Wilson. Well, thanks. But I had to hand that in back to respond to Counselor Demota. Um, and I, I just invite you to take a look at um, what appears in our agenda as appendix A, but it's not an appendix. It is the proposed new agreement. Um, and item twelve A confirms the vision of the authority. And it is to be a leader in regional waste reduction and um, to manage effectively the waste in West Yellowhead region. So if effective waste management means we, we track where things are going, it's, it's part of the vision. So um, I think you might find comfort in that phrase in, in a proposed agreement that there, there will be a focus on more than just managing landfill, managing waste overall with a focus on reducing waste to the extent we can.
That arrives me with comfort. Thank you.
Counselor Wilson, then Counselor Ireland?
Sorry, just related to that, uh, incorrect if I'm wrong, Maryland. But uh, with this new management agreement comes along as, with a dedicated uh, staff. Um, whereas prior to this, it was managed off of the desks of a few different people within the administration uh, uh, hidden. So I think uh, there would be more dedication into the um, you know, of course, the management of the uh, mantle, but also a uh, diversion opportunity.
Thank you, Counselor Wilson. Counselor Melick?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Hall. Uh, I don't know if Mr. Given wants to, okay, thank you. Um, I'm going through the appendix, and I see we have the hundred thousand dollars. And I just want to ask some questions for clarity, uh, either Mr. Given or uh, Counselor Wilson and Mayor Ireland. The hundred thousand dollars is divided between the four entering into the agreement on an equal basis or by population?
Yeah, if I may, thank you, uh, Acting Deputy Mayor Hall. Financial contributions are currently made based on percentage of weight delivered to the landfill. So I, I cannot recall what Jasper's proportion is. It seems to me that it's like eleven percent or something. And that does not include parts of Canada waste because that is, that is paid for separately. And collectively, but anyway, our, our proportional share is not equal. Uh, we are not at twenty-five percent, um, in number, just because there are four of us. We pay based on, on weight. It's workable. It has some challenges, particularly, I think, in terms of initiatives for waste reduction and recycling. Because if you're successful um, in a, in a reduction program, you may see it in terms of of some reduction in your costs, but it's not as easy to measure. But in any event, it sure answer your question. We pay based on volume and health.
Great. And, and just to follow up, I see that it's a five-year agreement with no in other words, it continues to be a hundred thousand dollars, there's no inflationary increase, there's no um, annual increase. That the, it's one hundred thousand dollars over the five years. And I also read into this that within that hundred thousand dollars, the manager needs to maintain all of the liability insurances as well. Or am I reading that incorrectly? And will that become additional cost over above the hundred thousand dollars divided between the partners?
Uh, Mr. Given, that's that.
Thanks very much, Acting Deputy Mayor Hall. I think one thing that's important to point out is that the uh, management agreement is between the authority and the uh, and the manager. And so it's not a, not a direct relationship, you know, that we will be invoiced specifically for that percentage as, as Mayor Ireland align. I mean, ultimately, we're responsible for a certain percentage of the total cost of the operation. But it will be up to the, to the board to decide, you know, do they want to fund this kind of cost out of existing reserves or out of, you know, a, a current contribution they've asked for members to contribute to in that proportion. So just to be a little bit um, precise, um, but there, the management agreement doesn't necessarily mean that we're going to be invoiced for our eleven percent of the hundred thousand dollars, um, because that would actually go to the authority. And then the authority board will decide how they wish to pay that expense. So just to clarify that. Um, additionally, I would uh, point out around the payments. Um, and good to show that you're showing a due consideration for our municipal neighbors that's opposing acting that capacity. If you look at uh, six point one, there are six payments. Uh, it does identify that the authority, again, this is the authority, not the individual constituent municipalities, but the authority and manager were in good faith, such annual payments prior to the end of the first year of the term. Uh, there was an acknowledgement that we're not Uh, there was an acknowledgement that we're not 100% certain that $100,000 is, is the right amount. There is an acknowledgement that, you know, maybe it will take a little bit more work, maybe it'll take a little bit less. This is probably about the right amount. But we, uh, as administrators acknowledge, you know, we, we need to run a year, see if that's enough. Because we don't want to end up in a situation where the authority is under-resourced in terms of material support. And the rest of us that are acting, you know, uh, trying to protect the interests of our, our municipalities or partners want to ensure that we aren't, you know, signing up for something that's too rich. So there's a commitment to reviewing that annual payment at the, uh, end of the first term, sorry, first year. And then there'd be an opportunity to say, okay, this looks like it's about right or it needs to escalate by a certain amount. And then we turn that back to, that would, sorry, again, that would go back to the authority board. We could give this, that authority to manage a relationship rather than individual municipalities.
Thank you, Mr. Given. I saw councillor Wilson at your head up.
Yeah, it probably doesn't need to be said, but I was going to clarify that the manager is Yellowhead County, not an actual position of manager. But it says in the right there, so.
Thank you councillor Wilson. Mayor Ireland.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Hall. And, and I think this is, now perhaps abundantly clear, but just to hammer the point home. Our municipality as a member is responsible for our weighted share of the budget. The budget includes the $100,000 that goes to the manager. But the budget is a lot more than $100,000. But on occasion, there is a surplus. And if there is a surplus, we, the board decides what to do with it. But if it is to be returned, it is returned on the same weighted scale based on, on volume. So, um, the $100,000 is simply the contractual obligation to the manager. And that's contractual obligation of the authority on the municipalities as Mr. Given expressed. So I hope that it's all clear. I hope I haven't made it less clear.
No, thank you for that, but, um, without curiosity, I'll ask the question. And I suppose it will come in our financial statements. What our share was during the last budget year that we contributed to have this agreement. All appropriately spent money, but I think it'd just be good to know the number.
Thank you, councillor Milmick. Mr. Given, you did your head up earlier.
I, I did. I thought you were going to say, so Deputy Mayor Hall, in all, in all seriousness, I, I don't have that number in hand. Councillor Milmick, you're 100% correct as a part of the regular process of our annual audit financial statements. Council will receive that information. Stuff will be presented. I'm sure we could, we could dig that up if necessary and respond, you know, by the back, by giving the council advance of the other financial statements forward. So, so you'll see in a couple of squads. We don't want to fall behind to provide that to you. I did have my hand up, uh, just to maybe go back to Mayor Ireland's earlier point around the dispute resolution, if you could. And we're in a committee, so, uh, you know, a little bit of discussion around that. The mayor's is plainly corrected his interpretation of, you know, that, what it actually says. I think that it, I'd like to propose something to council and the mayor to consider that the, the dispute resolution process is, is also specific that it lays out an escalation approach. Basically says if, if the minister, if the board, if the constituent members of the board can't agree or there's some disagreement, triggers this process, which first identifies that the issue should, uh, go to the respective joint administrations. So the board, and to use the financial example that the mayor outlined, I have one member objects. Then what would happen practically is the CAOs would meet, say, okay, there's a issue here. We're concerned about, you know, municipality A is concerned about the proposed increase. And is objecting to the budget on that basis. The administrator would hear that and see if there is any, uh, solution to that, uh, that we could advise the board. So, you know, acting as, in a, in a capacity of providing advice, administrative advice to the board. That would be the first layer of dispute resolution. The second layer of dispute resolution, which if the administrators couldn't come to some agreement that's supportable, that they could propose back to the board, would be that the issue would be referred to all of the constituent councils for discussion. So there'd be an administrative collaboration opportunity to see if the dispute could be resolved. If it couldn't be resolved, sorry, resolved at the administrative level. Now escalate to the political level where the councils would have an opportunity to discuss, uh, review the issue and see if there's an opportunity to resolve it. And if there wasn't, then it would go to the arbitration clause. So it is true that a individual municipality could object to the budget. And I'm not sure that a veto is exactly right, but an individual municipality could trigger this process. The process that's laid out here has a number of steps. Again, administrative problem solving, that fails, political problem solving, and ultimately that fails. Somebody needs to make a call and that does go to the arbitrator. So, um, I don't know if that gives council, you know, enough confidence that that process would enable, would, would enable any of the member municipalities to have appropriate influence to prevent this from becoming simply a requisition authority, with a requisition authority such as the library board or Evergreens, sorry, Evergreens. You know, we, we don't have that ability to, to work that way. Their assessment about the budget happens at the board, our representative at the board would take forward this out of Jasper's concerns and the administration of Evergreens would try to incorporate those concerns into the budget. I, I haven't looked in detail at the dispute resolution process there. But from an administrative perspective, I'm quite comfortable. This is an appropriate process that would enable a really significant amount of, would require a significant amount of dialogue before getting to arbitration with the bond in the member municipalities. And when it comes to the withdrawal, uh, it is interesting, uh, point 45, that there must be an agreement to the municipalities to allow any municipality to withdraw. I think that that's, there, there may be a better way of doing that. But if there was a municipality that was regularly dissatisfied with actions of the authority, that municipality has the right of the agreements to trigger the dispute resolution process. And I can do that, you know, uh, put this in a little bit of a lighter manner. If there was a municipality that was regularly dissatisfied and objecting to the direction of the board setting of budget or other matters and regularly triggering the dispute resolution process, it wouldn't be a surprise to me that everybody would be happy to provide them the opportunity to exit. So, you know, it, it, it is a bid on, but it also doesn't mean that a municipality can't even allow it or withdraw, which there could be some really significant challenges for Jasper if Yellowhead County, you know, sort of, or the town of Hinton chose to withdraw, considering the, the, you know, central roles in terms of the management now proposed, um, and that the actual physical location. So, you know, that idea that there needs to be some common agreement. But though you can imagine how this would work in practice. If somebody was regularly triggering dispute resolution, I think you'd have to have some part dark conversation about, do you really want to be here? And do we really want to be here? And I think the agreement allows for that. But if there are some specific changes, uh, that council wished to propose or the committee wished to propose, we could identify those here. We do have some time before this would be forwarded to the other councils, sorry, to, before all councils forwarded this to their regular meetings. Mayor is intending to grant for this type of discussion today when we intend to move into formal ratification of the call of council meeting. It does give us an opportunity that there's some, some changes that need to be proposed. We have some space to do that. And we'll say it will also be challenging if every other municipality decides that they also have, that they want to propose for changes. You can imagine that if, um, the other three also proposed their own independent changes that we had to consider at our next council meeting in addition to ours. It can be challenging. Doesn't mean that we can't do it. Doesn't mean that it's not worth doing. It just means that we have to recognize that this may be that, uh, this comes, might be challenging to conclude at our next regular council. A bit of discussion in the context of.
Thank you, Mr. Given. Mayor Ireland.
Thank you, Deputy Deputy Mayor Hall. I do appreciate, um, that level of discussion. This is committee and that's what we should be doing. And just to clarify, my concern is not so much with, um, section 40. And I, I appreciate the escalation clause. And so there are lots of opportunities to resolve disputes before you get to arbitration. But I think I began my earlier comments with reference to section 23, which specifically says that if anybody votes against the budget, that goes to arbitration. Or at least that goes to the dispute resolution process. Does that imply that every time there is a split vote, it is a dispute that goes to the dispute resolution process? Earlier in the agreement, um, it is clear that we vote, um, and I think it is at least implied, it is not expressly stated, that the majority of votes carries the day. So I'm not sure why the budget itself should be singled out as something that, or if there is not unanimous approval of the budget, it goes to dispute, which could escalate to an arbitrator determining something which then I, I feel amounts to a requisition. And I, I'm just concerned about that. But I, I appreciate that others might be reading this as well, coming up with their own nitpicky arguments. But this is mine and, uh, all I'm suggesting is that we at least have an opportunity to discuss the meaning of these related clauses at the board level to make sure that all are in favor. And I would be prepared to say that the collective will of the board is that this works. Then we are, if we agree to be a member of the authority, then we're subject to the rules. And that's all right. But I'd like to have the discussion first as allison.
Thank you, Mayor Ireland. Mr. Given.
Exactly, Deputy Mayor Hall. So Mayor Ireland, I wonder, and councillor, I wonder if on point 23, is it important to distinguish that, that this is talked about the municipalities rather than the municipalities representatives at the board? So, so at the board, uh, when the board is debating and establishing the budget for the operation of the authority, the majority vote will carry the day. But that budget is not final until approved by the member municipalities. So the, so the board could, just thinking about that, the board could have a disagreement where members of the board, uh, are voting against the budget for whatever reason, but the budget carries at the board level because there's a majority support for it. That budget would then be forwarded to the member municipalities, which is who I think 23 and those other points you're talking about is actually constituent municipalities get a chance to review the financial statements and the board's proposed budget. The, the member municipalities can object, then trigger the dispute resolution. So this does not, um, curtail the sort of appropriate, you know, consensus, the sort of majority decision of voting, uh, at the board level. It does mean though that if there's one municipality who is objecting to the budget as proposed by the board, then you trigger the dispute resolution process. And again, I think we all think of, uh, how that might work in, in, under the most challenging circumstances. If you have a, a member, uh, at the board level votes against the budget because that's potentially the bill of their council. Or it might not be, um, but, you know, votes against the budget at the board level, the board approves the budget. Their council either supports that authority, that representative at the authority by saying, yes, we also disagree with the budget. So there was, you know, or their council says, oh, no, we actually support the budget. It was only our representative that supported the budget. But again, you know, and then all the process from there. So I think that distinction between, uh, disagreement, which is saying what responsibility and rights the constituent municipalities have, independent of their roles on the board as representative board table.
Thank you, Mr. Given. Councillor DeMota.
I was going to ask the viewers at home if you got all of that. Complicated layers. I think I wrapped my head around it, but I appreciate that, you know, the, uh, the walkthrough of that definition. So if that helped me out, a little bit mind bending, but I, I understand where you're coming from. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor DeMota. Other questions from council? Councillor, you seem to make a motion.
Well, I'm, after that is, uh, after Mr. Given had shed a bit more light on it and you scroll back up to paragraph 17, um, I think that suggests that once the authority has voted on the budget, it gets submitted to the municipalities and, you know, the turn carries on to, uh, paragraph 23, which I, Mayor Ireland had the issue with. But I think as it's suggested, municipalities rather than the authority. And that clarifies enough for me to be comfortable with, with the word of both these today.
Mayor Ireland, Sarah, comment?
There is. Thank you. I really appreciate, um, that nuance. And I'm, I'm looking for some clarity in the document and I, and I don't, I don't find it. But I would perhaps be content then to approve in principle, subject to a change, simply in item 23, to say that in the event that one or more of the councils of member municipalities withhold approval. That seems to be the suggestion that Mr. Given, um, says can be read into that clause. But I find the word municipalities throughout the document. And I have to say, it does not mean council, cannot be conceived, I think, to be construed as being council in many cases. It means, it means members and the members are represented on the board and, um, make certain decisions. But if, if that is intended to say that when it gets back to council of a municipality, then that does change my concern. But I'm not yet satisfied and perhaps I just need more time to, to read the document again thoroughly, um, looking for that. It's a nice nuance. I'm just not sure that it's a necessary read of that section. It could be amended just slightly, I think, to say that it is limited to that objection by a council of a member municipality.
Thank you, Mayor Ireland. Mr. Given.
I'm not sure if everybody's having as much fun as I have. But, um, your worship, the document doesn't have a definition section. As close as we get to that is in the first whereas, which defines what the municipalities are. So would it maybe rather than getting into the points, maybe we could define, you know, in that first whereas, whereas the councils of Yellowhead, Hinton, Hinton and Jasper collectively, the municipalities. Because then it, it, that's essentially acting as a definition section for the term municipality throughout the rest of the document. And it does make a distinction in that first whereas between the municipalities, which are the councils that we added that of Yellowhead, Hinton, Jasper. And it is the councils who entered into the improvements or directed that. And it makes a distinction between those bodies and the West Yellowhead Regional Waste Management Authority or the authority. So that's as close as we get to a definition section in the document without suggesting we add a whole new layer of a definition section. We can make that definition a bit more precise, uh, because it then would apply throughout the entire document rather than just adding the word, um, in, in point seven, uh, in point, uh, sorry, 23. That, that would make it clear that it's actually the councils of the member municipalities in every instance where municipalities runs.
Thank you for that, Mr. Given. Councillor DeMota.
I don't want to be the guy that says that's what I was going to do, but I noticed that there weren't definitions in there. And I was thinking, while you were saying that, where could we address that? And I believe, for me, I don't have a concrete full understanding of where everything is in that document off the top of my head. But, you know, I'm not sure if that's going to cause any further confusion. But for me, it makes things a little bit clearer when we reference municipalities. But now I'm guessing, like, in a document like this, should there be definitions? Are there other things that need to be addressed that might consequently go throughout the document? Not sure, but. I like that direction. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Devota. Other comments or questions or a counselor? Please make a motion. Is he listening? Are you putting your head up or are you just touching? Counselor Malik.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Hall. And perhaps either Counselor Wilson or Mayor Ireland, Mr. Given. What's crucial, from what I'm hearing, is that the agreement to bring on the manager needs to be passed before the first of May. So we could probably break this into the two and then make recommendation on the agreement itself. Because that would have to be agreed to by the other partners as well, I would think. So that might be a way of moving forward to vote on the, what I guess is known as Appendix A, or the management agreement.
Thank you, Counselor Malik. Counselor Wilson.
I guess I would be willing to make a motion for the management agreement. But first question would be to Mr. Given. Do you see that being an issue with the other councils? If we come back with only one motion approving the agreement and then maybe another motion from Mayor Ireland of having split them, is there at least an issue with that?
True, Deputy Mayor Hall, no, Counselors. I think that these can move independently. Appreciate that there may be some nuance, or there may be some pros or cons to the agreement between the municipalities, not me, constituent councils of the municipalities or partners. But no, in all seriousness, there's no reason that we can't make a penalty. Appreciate that maybe some nuance, the nuance that the council might want to add to the authority agreement. I don't see any problem, I think, but effectively, that's the same.
Thank you, Mr. Given. Counselor Wilson.
Yeah, so I'd get there on then, and to move things forward. Short term, um, differ. Mayor.
I think that we can shorten it up. I did appreciate the comments earlier, Counselor Wilson, to separate them. But on reflection, this is a recommendation from committee to council in any event. So if you wish, I could make the motion now, but I think resolves. And that would be that committee recommend council approve the West Yellowhead Regional Waste Management Authority and the management agreements in principle as presented. And that committee direct the mayor to confirm with other representatives of the board the understanding of the term municipalities in clause 23. But it would be very narrow. I would just call around and confirm that we all have the same understanding of what that means then. If that is fine, we have a week to get that done. The recommendation would be before council next week in any event, and we could confirm both. I would just like to follow up. It's been a really good discussion here. But a discussion that I think would have benefited at the board level as well. We lack the time to take this back to the board, perhaps. But that wouldn't stop me from making some calls just to run it by others. I've made that motion. I think it'll always hold in a week if that's acceptable.
Thank you, Mayor Ireland. There is a motion on the table. We need to debate. No hands. I will call the question. All in favor? They're not opposed, and that is carried. For administration, did you get the motion from Mayor Ireland? I wonder if it might be appropriate to take a 10-minute break right now? We'll resume that. You can use the 11:35 if it's just eight minutes. I'd like to resume at a 5:00. So we'll resume our meeting at 11:35. Okay, Counselor, we will resume our meeting. Moving on to, maybe this is item 7.3, personal GB development information. Yes.
Thank you, Acting Deputy Mayor Hall. I had previously indicated that I have a conflict with respect to any discussions involving the development of personal GB. So I will absent myself if somebody will let me know when we move to the next item. I will return. Thank you.
Counselor, Mr. Given.
Sure. Thanks very much, Deputy Mayor Hall. This will be very, very short, so the mayor just go for far. Just wanted to provide an update to Council. There was some direction to seek some information on the development of that right back to Council. Just in terms of the verbal update, I followed up directly with the developer, the component. They directed me to Parks Canada to seek information that's submitted to them. Parks Canada is not a liberty, just those are the two ones. So I'm going to go back with the developer again. So we're in a bit of a circular pattern. But I didn't want to advise Council that management is undertaking this work. We don't have anything to report at this time. We didn't want to present anything that accurately reflect the current status of the proposal. And Parks has received, obviously, application information from the component, but they're in the process of advising the component or to make sure that the the component's proposal meets the park's requirements. And so we didn't want to come forward with something that was either, you know, pass dated, pass a special four date because the design has gone. And Parks didn't have the authority to disclose that information because it wasn't submitted to them to submit to us or even to the public. So we will go back to the component, ask for the most recent version. And when we receive that, we'll write back to Council. But I just want to make sure that we have a follow up to say that we're working on this. There's a little bit of a loop. We'll try to untangle that loop and come back to Council if the permission is wanted to get it.
Thank you, Mr. Given. Counselor Wilson.
Thank you for that. And honestly, this was actually, I think, from a motion I made. It was only courtesy to the public. Please don't harass the developer. They can operate at their own speed, and they could, they can share when they're willing to share it. Like honestly, in my mind, I don't think you should be pressuring them at all. They've got work to do. It's their own development. But because of the side and scope of the development, we can only ask because I think the community's interested.
Thank you, Counselor Wilson. Other comments from Council? I think that's good. We can call Mayor Ireland back for 11:38.
Maybe Deputy Mayor Hall just got as it was an item on the agenda, maybe the motion to receive the appropriate information.
Counselor, what did you got? Motion? Counselor Malik? Motion on the table. All in favor? Did you get that motion? Because I didn't even say it. Well, I didn't make the motion.
Motion, motion.
Yes, disconcerting how efficient you all are when I am not.
Welcome back, Mayor Ireland. We're moving on to item 7.4, RCMP advocacy.
Thank you. I added this just for transparency more than anything. I previously emailed to Council an invitation that I received from the Mayor of Edison to join a regional effort to advocate to the province on behalf of maintaining RCMP policing in our communities. Council had earlier taken that position in any event. And we have previously endorsed sending a letter to the province stating our position that we prefer to retain services of the RCMP. Perhaps it's unnecessary to get specific direction with respect to the request from Mayor Zahara to join regional mayors in joint letter. But I thought it would be useful to at least keep the matter on the public agenda and to confirm with Council that they authorize the mayor to engage in that respect. And I'm happy to do that. I have received a copy of the draft letter. And I would like to discuss some of the terms with Mayor Zahara and perhaps with other mayors before I endorse my consent. But I'm not sure that we need to get into the details. So we're snipping a letter, but I would like confirmation from Council that I am at least authorized to enter that joint initiative. And if I could just, a proposed motion, I can save that first for any comments anyone may have with respect to the request from Mayor Edison to join, the Mayor of Edison to join the joint initiative. But otherwise, I'm happy to make a motion.
Thank you, Mayor Ireland. Comments to Council?
If there is not being nuance, I'm sure.
Just, I don't know if it's on our part, and I don't know if it really matters not to be a sticker again, but in the correspondence that is sent to us, there's the third paragraph that starts with through polling. I don't know if it was intended or it got cut off, but I was having, I was having trouble understanding that sentence. I'm not sure if it pertains to.
Are you referring to the letter from, that is in Agenda 8 of our? I'm not sure. Do we hear it here? Oh, I apologize. So.
Let's see whether I can keep this in my head.
If I may, then, Acting Deputy Mayor, I will make this motion that committee authorized the mayor to engage with regional mayors in a joint advocacy initiative with respect to the government of her proposed transition to a provincial police service.
Thank you for your motion, Mayor Ireland. Open up the floor to any debates. Let's see any hands. There is a question on the table. I will call the question. All in favor? They're not opposed, and that is carried. Moving on to Agenda Item 8, 8.1, National Police Federation correspondence. This is Mayor, how's he building you? Question?
Yes, I wasn't sure if one had to do with the other. I got confused there, so I apologize for that. Yeah, again, I'm not sure if that makes sense, but I just, I thought there was a gap or something missing. And I don't know if that was from the transfer over because the, that pair, that sentence just seems to drop off. So through polling that the NPF has conducted over the past year, it is clear that Albertons field, the same with here.
Senator Hall, is there any extra review package? I had the same question, but certainly not going to take ownership over the Federation's document. But I would say that that looks like an inadvertent period that should be a common with an overwhelming 80% of Albertons' support for taking the RCMP. Yeah, I think it's important to put in, important power output. But I think that the principle is, you know, requesting the municipality endorse the call to action, which was forwarded to Council, as you were in boxes earlier. Essentially, they're asking for the municipality to lend its name and logo to their call to action, which I think is consistent with what Mayor Ireland described, past council issues.
Thank you, Mr. Given. I also thought maybe the word could have been way, the same way. Anyways. Any comments about this correspondence, Mayor Ireland?
Although Council has previously, and even just minutes ago, endorsed our position with respect to the issue, we have not engaged with anything other than either other municipalities or our provincial association. And I am somewhat hesitant to lend our logo to any other federation or interest-based group. Although we are all aligned in our opposition to the proposal, it is a step for me a bit too far to lend our name and logo to an independent organization such as this. So I'm a little hesitant to to accede to the request and allow them to use our name and logo in further of their cause, even though I do support the causes. Just different in kind, and I would prefer to conduct our business through our regional connections and partnerships and through whatever I'm supposed to call the former AUMA, Alberta Municipality Museum.
Thank you, Mayor Ireland. Want to some counsel? This correspondence we need to receive for information was a yes, Counselor Wilson?
I would just make, or I would agree with Mayor Ireland as well. And I'd also make a motion to just accept this correspondence of information.
Thank you, Counselor Wilson. Any comments from Council regarding the motion? I see no hands. There is a question on the table. I will call the question. All in favor? They're not opposed. This will be received for information. Moving on to Agenda Item Number Nine, our motion action list. So you can see that you see any of the actions?
Sure. Actually, I think all of the rest, Counselor, you'll see that we're generally on track. Next meeting likely to be a big one. I know that the directors are working on the major items. I think the only change that we propose to endorsing is the removal of that maker's arts and culture. Some will be outcomes of Director Reed's work. But I think that the follow up from that presentation of July of last year has been completed. There were obviously the other outcomes that arrived at the committee of councils that went through process that I don't think they're directly tied to the response to that presentation. So your consideration of potential amendments to the motion action list to amend it to remove the mountainous arts and culture item.
Thank you very much for that, Mr. Given. Counselor Wilson?
I am, well, Ross, we can back, is dated for April 2022. Have you been in correspondence with the development of this on? I am, well, Rosy Eback is dated for April 2022, if you've been in correspondence with the development office on that one, do we expect to see something?
Thanks very much Deputy Mayor Hall or Councilor Wilson, yes, administration is going to provide advice to council, we've had a couple dialogue sessions with the development office at Parks along with our municipal administration to identify concerns and issues that we might have related to emergency access, user access, the other municipal services. We believe that we have a solid understanding of the majority of the issues and will have a position to present to council for their consideration on the regional correspondence.
Thank you very much, Mr. Given, any questions to council? Council wishing to make a motion to receive this, amending, removing mountain makers, Councilor Malik?
Thank you Acting Deputy Mayor Hall, just perhaps a question on the third motion action list item relationship with Jasper Community Team Society and Friends of Jasper Culture and Recreation. Has that maybe been effectively been covered or is that going to be part of what we received today from Mr. Reed, can this one actually be removed?
Mr. Given.
Thanks very much Acting Deputy Mayor Hall, as much as I would like to, you know, have zero items on our to do list, I think actually that this one should stay. The community development team, it has been busy proposing a relationship policy that would better define and specify how we manage certain kinds of relationships, so there's going to be an actual deliverable that is in the works. There's a draft of that that we expect to present over the next four weeks and in the main meeting, we'll be showing that to council. There was specific desire to set this, so what, how do we define those relationships, these specific ones and more broadly? The community development team is working on that and it will be ready to hear it, thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Given. Council wishing, taking a motion to take this in for information, amendment of mountain makers, Councilor? Council, should we open that for debate? Yes, there is a question on the table, I will call the question, all in favor? They're not opposed, that is carried. Moving on to Agenda Item 10, council representation on boards in upcoming meetings. The board to council. Councilor Malik.
The Jasper Yellavet Historical Society will have their monthly meeting tonight, and I'll be in attendance at that. And I believe beyond that, that is all on the plate for the next week.
Thank you, Councilor Malik. Council, I can, I have a Lederberg meeting tomorrow night, and next weekend I'll be off to Edmonton with the friends of the Lederberg for a casino, Councilor Malik, will you join me? Councilor Wilson?
Sorry, just to check another calendar, I'll be attending school age community conversations tomorrow at 3 o'clock.
Mayor Ireland?
The date escapes me, but sometime soon I'd have been invited to a meeting with four members of parliament, including our own MP, Mr. Soroka, Michelle Barrery, I believe an Ontario MP who is Shadow Minister of Tourism, an MP from Edmonton, Kelly McCauley, who is Shadow Minister of and an MP, I'm not sure of his riding, Bernard General. And I understand that also in attendance will be Shelley Lawrence, who is I misstated, but associated with the indigenous band that is doing work in the park on the pipeline through Parks Canada. This is a meeting that has been put together through Jasper Park Chamber of Commerce, started, I think with one MP, our one MP, Mr. Soroka, has expanded a bit, but it will be an opportunity to at least educate a broader section of Canada about some of the issues that we specifically face as a municipality within a national park, so hopefully able to take that meeting and report as I can after, I think it's the 20th this month, which is next, my mistake.
Thank you Mayor Ireland, Councilor Malik.
Just to follow up with that, I believe the individuals involved will also be all in attendance at the chamber breakfast that morning at 7:30 in the morning at the Chateau.
Thank you, Councilor Malik. Moving on to Agenda Item 11, upcoming events, there is, as we just heard from Council Malik, a Jasper Park Chamber of Commerce Commerce General Meeting at 7:30 in the morning, the Chateau Jasper next Sunday the 20th. And that evening, there is a NETMA meeting at the Dead Dog from 5 until 7. National Volunteer Week kicks off April 24th to the 30th. Emergency preparedness week, May 1st to 7. The open house for that week is on the 4th, the fire hall from 3 until 7, that's always a time line to turn all people, there's lots of food, wine and desserts, hot chocolate and stickers and pins. The State of the Municipality address for the Jasper Park Chamber of Commerce is May 11th, and we have an intergovernmental meeting on Tuesday, May 17th. I would also like to add on May 12th, this makes for a reforestation project, we'll keep following. And I believe that's everything for upcoming, that's anybody have anything to add, Councilor Malik and then Mayor Ireland?
We have Earth Day on April 22nd, and the Rotary Club of Jasper has decided that as part of what they would like to do on Earth Day is meet at the front of the library at either noon or 5 o'clock, and will undertake a cleanup of the town trail as part of involvement in Earth Day here in our community.
That's great, awesome, thank you, Mayor Ireland.
Just a reminder for everyone that the Uplift Jasper mural festival begins April 23rd and runs through May 8th. It matches with an indigenous artist on the wall of I guess the Astoria Hotel, joining the Jasper Pizza Place, and I believe that artist will be available at the NETMA event on April 20th. And just a little plug, because we are an active community, Canadian Rock and Staff Marathon and MK Races returning to Jasper on April 23rd. And if I may back on Agenda Item, upcoming meetings, I couldn't remember the date of my meeting with the four MPs, but I do recall now that it conflicts in fact with the arts and cultural community conversation on Wednesday, the 20th, I believe that the alternate to my appointment to that community conversation is Councilor Waxer. So if there is anyone who could volunteer to stand in in my stead for that arts and culture community conversation at 2 o'clock on April 20th, that would be great.
Mayor Ireland, I would be happy to join that conversation.
That's one to, to see if anybody else is going to be, just so that we have forum, I'm not going to be in Jasper, so I just thought, in case the people have plans that administration can organize this.
Thank you, Councilor, any other upcoming events or to add? I think is that the appropriate time to take a lunch break, and we would resume in camera, what is? Or we are missing something?
No, for consideration, I've just looked at this one, I think those being carried are relatively brief updates for council, you may have wanted
That sounds good to me, I just want to make sure all of us agree. So any motion to move into camera? Mayor Ireland, is that motion all in favor? Moving into camera at 11:59.